Yeah, I did. Yeah. This suit doesn't get out in direct clean. That's that to get out to direct clean. Oh, yeah. All right, Kelly, if you want to push the button, we'll start. Okay. Welcome this morning. We have a, a, a bunch of meetings before we get to our commission meeting. Um, they should be short. The first one is to our, is our Utah Valley Roads Special Service District. Uh, we've got two members of the board. We're looking for a third, so we have to be unanimous. How's that?
Sounds good.
Um, and, and so, uh, uh, first on the agenda is to review and consider the tentative adoption of the twenty twenty tentative budget for the Utah Valley Roads Special Service District. Any questions to that? I know that this one here, if you look at the numbers, uh, there's a sizable difference, uh, for the twenty twenty versus the years in the past, but it's an accumulation. It's a cum- accumulation of roads, of, of monies that have not been spent. I think maybe you had a question on that too, or you might have already talked with the mean.
I did, actually.
This is our, this is our B Roads, our SRS, um, funding. So any thoughts on that or any discussion?
No, I'm, I'm okay with it 'cause it's basically just revenues coming in and going down to the fund balance. No expenditures have been listed much, you know, five hundred dollars, but, so it's a pretty easy budget.
So this one, if, if there is any allocation to it, it'll come back to us for, um, to put them in those funds if needed.
Right.
Okay?
Hey, well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt the, uh, two thousand twenty tentative budget for the Utah Valley Roads Special Service District.
And I'll suspend the rule since there's only two of us and second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero. The second item on our agenda is to set a date, time, and location for a public hearing to discuss the twenty twenty budget for the Utah Valley Roads Special Service District, and suggested date is December tenth, tw- twenty nineteen at nine AM in room fourteen hundred of the county administration building.
So moved.
Now, second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero. The final motion?
Uh, move to adjourn.
I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. We're now adjourned from that meeting. Thank you. Thanks, Kelly. Okay. Read for the other commissioners. And you'll probably... Good go? Okay. All right, welcome this morning. Like I said, we have a number of, a number of meetings. Uh, we've got some service areas, service area six, seven, eight, and nine. And the, uh, municipal building authority. So if we can go in that order, starting with service area six, um, this one's for law enforcement. Service area six is for law enforcement, with two items on there to review and consider the tentative adopted, tentatively adopt the twenty twenty tentative budget for the Utah County Special Service District number six. This one has three million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in, in total revenues with an expected three million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in expenses. Any questions? Okay, motion to be in order?
I've moved that we approve the tentative budget as outlined in regular agenda item number one.
Second? Get a motion and a second to, uh, that we reviewed and considered the tentative budget as outlined in number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Number two is to set a date, time, and location for a public hearing to discuss the twenty twenty budget for the Utah County Service Areas number six. The date is December tenth at nine AM, room fourteen hundred.
I'll, uh, move that we set the meeting as stated in regular agenda item number two.
Second? Get a motion and a second to set that da- date, time, and location as stated in number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Do we have to go out of every single meeting, or this, uh, can we have these all as one meeting? Can we do everyone? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second? Got a mo- a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're now adjourned from that meeting. We'll wait till we change the recording. Density and, and the fire marshal and so forth. It has total revenues of one million, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five with the, with the same fo- one million, fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five in expenditures. Any questions to that?
No.
Okay. Motion to be in order?
I move that we adopt the, uh, tentative budget as stated in regular agenda item number one.
Second? Get a motion and a second to, uh, um, uh, adopt the, uh, twenty twenty tentative budget as stated in number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes two zero, three zero. Second wants to set a date, time, and location as stated in number two.
I move that we approve regular agenda item number two.
Second? Get a motion and a second to, uh, approve and set the date, time, and location as stated in number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Last motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Get a motion and a second to adj- adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're now adjourned from that meeting. Go to the next one. Okay, we're now in a meeting for the Utah County Service Area number eight. On the agenda, we have two items, ones to review, uh, the tentatively adopt the twenty twenty tentative budget, and the second one's to set a date, time, and location. This one is, uh, planning and zoning, and we have one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seven dollars in revenue. And, uh, the same in expenses, one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seven dollars in expenses projected. Any questions to it?
No.
No. Okay?
Move we approve regular agenda item number one.
Second? Get a motion and a second to, uh, uh, approve agenda item number one and adopt that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Number two is to set a date, time, and location?
Move we approve regular agenda item number two.
Second? Get a motion is, and a second to approve agenda item number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero.
Motion to adjourn?
Second? Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. We're now adjourned from that meeting. We'll move to the next one. Okay, we are now in a, um, a meeting for the Utah County Service Area number nine. On that, on our agenda, we have two items to review and consider the tentatively adopted twenty twenty tentative budget for the spec- for the service area number nine, and also the, uh, set a date, time, and location. This is for structure, fire, uh, low density. Uh, it has revenues of, uh, projected revenues of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred, and in the expenses projected for two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred. Any questions?
No. Move we approve regular agenda item number one.
Second? Get a motion and a second to approve agenda item number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes three zero. Number two?
Motion to approve regular agenda item number two.
Second? Get a motion and a second to approve agenda item number two. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes two, three zero.
Motion to adjourn?
Second? A motion and a second to adjourn that meeting. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're now adjourned from that meeting. Okay, our municipal building authority. Oh, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, we're now in the municipal building authority of Utah County. On the agenda is two agenda items. Uh, the first one is to review, consider tentatively adopting the twenty twenty tentative budget for the municipal building authority of, of Utah County, and also to set a date, time, and location. The projected revenue for this is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two, and the expenditures are the same, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two. Any questions? Seeing none, a motion to be in order?
Move we approve regular agenda item number one.
Second? Get a motion and a second to approve agenda item number one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Second wants to set the date, time, and location.
I've moved to approve regular agenda item number two.
Second? Um, and we, I've got a motion and a second to, uh, approve agenda item number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Now, uh, last motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're now adjourned from that meeting. Okay, welcome this morning to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. Um, as always, we start with a prayer reading or thought and the Pledge of Allegiance, and along with Angela, Angelica Thomas. She's gonna, uh, play for us, and if we can, if you continue standing after the pledge, she'll do that, and then we'll, we'll go from there. So is there, we looked at the audience for anybody who would like to participate with us. Anybody would like to do a prayer, reading, or thought? Or the Pledge of Allegiance, just raise your hand. Any volunteers? Got a pledge? Anybody with a prayer? I'll say the prayer this morning. Our heavenly Father, we thank thee, Father, for the opportunity that we have to be able to assemble, to assemble peace peaceably. We're thankful, Father, for, for what we have been given, and we recognize that we are truly blessed as a people to be able to live in a great land and to live in this great area. We're thankful for those who stand up and support the concept of freedom, the concept of liberty. We pray that as, as we work through issues, that we can do so in a meaningful way, looking to support those, those concepts. We pray for those who defend our country and our area and our communities. We pray for them as they put their lives on the line. We pray, Father, for the opportunities to do the best and the best we can, and recognize, and recognize the individuals that are doing so. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could continue to stand, National Anthem. All right, we'll hear from her in just a second. Well, um, we have no work session items. Uh, we do, we're gonna build our agenda, and then we'll have an opportunity to hear from you. On our consent, um, agenda, if we could just hold number one for, opportunity for her to speak. Are there any others on the consent agenda that we need to hold off? We're, we're putting out all of them on consent, uh, right now until we build the agenda.
I didn't have any.
Okay, looking to our published regular agenda, um, if we could hold number one. Uh, it's been asked that we continue number three for one week. And it's also been asked that we strike number six. There's it you have? Okay. Okay, all, everything else then has been either adopted, agreed to, ratified, or however it's written in the, in the documents. So we'll, we'll go back then to our, our consent agenda. Come on up. Come on up and tell us a little bit about what you do, what you, what you did to get where you're at, and what your thoughts are going forward.
Hello, my name is Angelica Thomas, and I'm a student at UVU, and I'm a violin performance major, and I'm very passionate about the arts, and I love serving the people of Utah County. I served as Miss Orem twenty eighteen, and I've served in the Miss America Organization for three years now. So I'm very passionate about community service, and I have a lot of experience with hosting events, fundraisers, uh, benefit concerts, galas, and, uh, all kinds of community events that can bring people together for a good cause, and I would really love to continue to do that and work hand in hand with you as I serve the county this year.
Fantastic. Any questions or any? Thank you, thank you for doing that. We always need individuals that will step up and volunteer and do what they can in the community, so thank you.
Just, just a couple of quick questions for you. Obviously, one of the unique things about, uh, you know, representing the county is the platform that you, you ran on. Uh, and you mentioned serving the people. What's, what's kind of your platform? What are you hoping to bring awareness to? And what do you hope to accomplish during your tenure as Miss Utah County?
My social impact initiative as Miss Utah County is called Healing Hearts Through the Arts, and I'm very passionate about helping people find creative and healthy outlets, uh, constructive instead of destructive outlets to deal with their emotions, especially young children. And so, this next semester, my plan is to go into schools regularly. I'm structuring my schedule so that I can go into school classrooms and assemblies and present about healthy, health, uh, healthy mental health management through creative expression and connection. And, uh, I do a lot of volunteer work with the special needs community, doing music and art therapy and classes and activities. I work with the elderly, I worked with veterans, I work with all, all people from all walks of life in our county, and I'm really excited to further my mission that I, that I did as Miss Orem on a larger scale and prepare to represent as Miss Utah potentially next year.
Fantastic.
So, um, I guess the main reason why I wanted to come here today was to just ask how I can help serve the county in conjunction with you, because there's a lot of events that I already am hosting, uh, as Miss Utah County just because of connections that I have with different nonprofit organizations, but I would love to work more hand in hand with, with the actual county and the commissioners.
Well, hopefully, when we, when we do our state of the county address, hopefully, you can be able to play there as well, and sometimes those dates don't quite match with schedules, but if it does with yours, let's see if we can get you there for at least that one.
Fantastic, thank you. I, I included a schedule in the back of my resume that has, um, some of the events I've already done so far. I was just recently crowned, so there's still a lot to do, but I have some of my plans on there, and there's definitely a lot of flexibility, so if you have a county event that you're hosting that you'd like for me to perform at or help with, I would be most honored to come and assist. I'm here to serve you and the people of this county, and I really admire all that you do to serve the people.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We'll now go to regular agenda item number one is to approve and authorize the Utah County Commission to increase the fleet by holding over vehicles to be used in the sheriff's office as per the attached justification. I kinda went down through that. I'm wondering, uh, Richard, when I was reading down through this, since we're going through a process right now, looking at the fleet overall.
Yes.
If this is something that we shouldn't hold until we go through that process, I, that was just my first thoughts.
The, the, this was actually an item that was on the agenda a couple of months ago, and it was continued at that meeting for a week or two. I don't remember which, uh, it was on there. We were asked, you know, a week or so ago by the sheriff's office what the status was, and looked into it, realized it had not ma- made it back on the agenda. So we asked to put it back on just to see where, where we were at so we could have this discussion, so, um, you know, I don't know if anybody from the sheriff's office is prepared to talk about it, but I'll let them explain why they're looking for the vehicles.
Yeah, I, I'm just, as we're going through the process with the fleet, I'm wondering if it, if we shouldn't just fold it all together, everything as we're looking at it, and instead of having bits and pieces.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's up to you guys, so whatever you'd prefer. If you'd like to hear the, the reasoning on, on why, why the sheriff's office would, would like the vehicles, I think they've explained in, in, in here.
Yeah, I read down through.
I, I'd love to hear them here today. It'd be great.
Lieutenant Jeffrey Jones, I'm over, well, pardon, I'm the lieutenant in the jail, and I could tell you about a few of the vehicles that are my responsibility. And the, the first one we're gonna talk about is, is the, uh, one of the trucks that we're using in the kitchen area, not just in the kitchen, but it's also used for the garden area, and, uh, that truck has actually saved us, well, I would say thousands of dollars in opportunity buys. Uh, one in particular, we bought, uh, a couple pallets of fish that was shipped to Gunnison, and we went, we picked that up, and that was about twenty-five cents a pound compared to two fifty a pound that it normally costs because they rejected it. And one of the companies that allowed us to have an opportunity buy called us, and we were able to go get it. We have a lot of those, of all those opportunities that come up with the kitchen, but one of the biggest reasons for that truck is that, uh, we, we have a, a responsibility as per our, our contract for Mills on Wheels, when things aren't right, to deliver some, deliver stuff to the, to the places that it goes, to all of the, the senior centers, and we've used that truck, you know, almost daily for that purpose. It's also, we're in the process right now, as it sits, we do not have the capacity to feed from outside of the, of the kitchen itself in disaster emergency preparedness, and we're in the process of figuring that out and using some of the equipment to actually set it up so we can feed outside of the kitchen, because if that kitchen goes down, we don't have the means to supply water, we don't have the means to, to feed, but we do have, emergency services has a few trailers that we could use that truck to pull back and forth and reposition, and, uh, I, I think that this truck is actually gonna be used for more than it's ever been used for. So any questions on that truck?
And so, I, I, just so I'm perfectly clear, you feel like having this vehicle significantly saves the county money, particularly in food acquisitions, as well as making it so we can deliver the Mills on Wheels program?
Without a doubt, and I also believe the responsibility on the emergency part is something that we're gonna have to look at really soon, and the fact that we're not prepared to do that yet makes me a little bit nervous, but I think this truck, well, I know this truck will help in that as we go on. We're trying to look at some trailer companies to help us, so we can set up a trailer so we can actually feed outside of the kitchen, and that would be instrumental in that.
Okay. And, and if we, if we shift our, our fleet, you know, completely, what would you do with this vehicle? Would you be okay if we, if we incorporated this into a shift in our fleet, if we moved to a leasing program or something like that? And what do you see as the long-term objectives with this particular change today? Is this a, a permanent change, or is this, we're, we're keeping this vehicle so that it stays in function as we work through a process?
I think it stays in function. I mean, it's not gonna last forever, obviously, uh, and it, it has a few miles on it right now, but I think that we, we make it work until we figure out something different is, is what I would say.
Okay, so that's, that answers that question more, thank you.
Now, this is not the only one that's on this.
No.
Right, there's several.
Nancy has one as well. Is there, is there more than two?
There's only, there's two. There's four.
Four. I think the other one might be with, well, might be mine as well, yes?
Ford Explorer Control.
Don't know about that.
That's going to Vips.
Okay.
A, a, as they're pulling this up, I think this is a challenge here. It is a, an interesting time to have a holdover because one of the areas we're looking to save is not, we're not just talking about the leasing. For me, that's only part of the discussion is whether to lease or own, but the other part of the discussion is we have vehicles in our fleet that may not be necessary right now, and that's one of the areas we've identified is that we can cut back, is reducing the number of vehicles, or making sure, at least through an audit, that those that are out there are entirely necessary. Sounds like we had a good explanation on this one, but it's just interesting, 'cause right now we are kinda going through and doing something that we should have been doing a little bit more meticulously over the years, and we haven't been. Um, and making sure that we don't have vehicles we don't need.
No, I, I assure you the vehicles that I'm, that I supervise are absolutely neat, so that's what I can tell you from my point of view and from yours. I, 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 that's, that's your job, and I don't envy your job, but I appreciate that you do.
Lieutenant Nancy Killian with the sheriff's office. I work in the jail. Currently, I'm over the, um, training of the new cadets that come into the academy. At any given time, we can have three or four different academies going on at one time. So, cur- traditionally, over the last few years, we've gone into the negative balance on our mileage budget, and we have to provide either mileage or a car for our cadets to go to the academy. So this is one of the reasons we asked for the additional cars, because we had so many academies going on and so many, um, mileage, overuse of mileage that we figured another car would help reduce. It won't eliminate the mileage, but it'll help reduce, uh, the amount of mileage we use. Uh, the jail staff do not have assigned vehicles to them, and so they have to, either, like I said, we either have to provide a car or we have to pay mileage for them to go to these academies. Right now, we have just had six people graduate from an academy, and we have four people still in the academy. Uh, the law enforcement academy, we have two people in that ac- three people in that academy, and then we'll have two people that start here in November. The issue with having them not all ride together and have one big van is they have different places and different locations, different times that they have to be there, different times that they have to stay there, and so they, they can't ride together because they have different things going on throughout their academy days to do, so. Any questions on those?
Have, have you looked at, have you done the analysis on the cost of mileage versus owning, depreciating, fueling a vehicle?
We have not. Um, but I do know currently we're, uh, I think it's negative almost six thousand dollars in our mileage budget, so.
Which that's, to me, that's not a big deal. The, the issue is not about... Which that's, to me, that's not a big deal. The, the issue is not about, the question is what's the more effective way? What's the more cost-effective way of transporting? If it's mileage, then we don't need to have a vehicle. If, if only when the vehicle is actually less expensive to own and maintain than doing all of that mileage reimbursement, should we do that? Other than in cases where, like our patrol, where even if it's more expensive, they need that vehicle, right? In Public Works, we have that, but for, for unmarked vehicles, um, there's just no reason for us to provide a vehicle, um, instead of mileage if, if it's way more expensive to do that. I, I say there's no reason. There, there might be other reasons. But when you, when you give up those two alternatives, I think we need to have that cost analysis, uh, before we make a decision.
We know it's certainly cheaper to have our own vehicle rather than rent a vehicle from Public Works, uh, because we have to pay for gas and mileage when we rent from Public Works. So we do know that. Uh, we don't know if it's cheaper to have a car and not pay the mileage. So we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any other questions about the other vehicles on there? I'm not even sure what they were. Heard there was a Vips and a, this was for Vips, and a, uh... I believe it was a victim advocates.
Yep, victim advocates is on there as well.
Anything?
I guess for me, the biggest thing is, is Tanner alluded to, I'm just trying to, you know, look through these vehicles and, and cut where we can. And so I just need to understand the justification for what, how it's saving us money to hold these particular vehicles over. That's, I mean, that's the, the question. It sounds like on the one vehicle, we're probably gonna need some additional research to understand if it's more cost-effective to hold it over or to pay mileage. And on the others, you know, to me, on the truck, it probably makes sense to hold the truck over because it's, you know, helping us save significant money on food acquisition. And so I don't wanna cut off our nose despite our face, but I need to make sure that we're finding these vehicles and getting rid of the ones we can.
I don't think anyone's done a cost analysis on something like that, but, um, you know, as far as the Vips goes, uh, you know, volunteer and policing, uh, we have to have a vehicle for our, our volunteers to go out. They're the ones that go out to help with traffic control. They'll go out and help with any type of parades, any, uh, they'll go out on a night shift, help people, you know, they'll wait with a vehicle. If there's unrest being made, wait for a tow truck to come. You know, it just saves, uh, our deputies' time, makes us more efficient so they can get back on the road quicker. They, they do a lot of things. It's a marked unit. It says Utah County Vips. So it's, uh, you know, very visible what it is. I don't think, you know, you could pull that off with a, you know, a personal vehicle.
And with, with those Vips vehicles, we have a few of them in the fleet already. They are, um, past patrol vehicles. We rebrand them with the Vips insignia, but the, they are a patrol vehicle, you know, lights and radios, everything like that and...
And as far as the victim advocate, I can assure you this, without doing the, the cost analysis on it, that they are as busy as people as we have in the sheriff's office. They are constantly going from one end of the county to another. Again, I can't give you numbers, but I can assure you it's, it's not one of those where they just take it home, come back to work and they're done. You know, that's, that's the only, uh, use for it. They are, uh, transporting victims. They're, they're doing a lot of different things to court and, and, and everything else. So that's what I can, uh, tell you about the victim advocates.
And, and I don't know if you've noticed, Richard, maybe you do. How many miles roughly is the victim advocate car running a year?
Uh, I don't know on, on the mileage. We, we could, we could find that out for what, what they're looking, but I don't know what I'll tell them.
I would tell you it's probably very similar to, if not more than a, a detective.
Detective car.
Yeah.
Probably in the eighteen thousand.
Eighteen to twenty, right?
Twenty somewhere in there. Maybe just a, a quick clarification on this. Uh, these vehicles are ones that, that, uh, were scheduled to be rotated out of the fleet. New ones have been purchased to replace them in, in their primary function. So, um, the procedure is these come to the commission at, at the request of, of the department wanting to hold them over. Then you make a decision whether we, whether we increase the fleet. Uh, they are not recapped. Is that correct to mean on these like this? They're, they've already been recapped and replaced. So these are just, you don't have that, that component of the cost.
Just have the maintenance cost.
Just have the maintenance cost, but they are ones with, you know, a little bit older, a little higher mileage. So you do have a higher maintenance cost than you would on some of the others. So, uh, we are currently working with the sheriff's office on the, uh, the examination of the entire fleet and looking at where we can cut at the request of the commission. So we are in, in process on that right now.
And I could be wrong, but, um, sometimes these, when we increase the fleet like this, um, they come back around and then, uh, there is no recap on them.
Correct.
And they become a necessary, perceived necessary function in which then we are paying the full amount, you know, for, for a vehicle whenever we increase that fleet. So it's, it's one where we have to, it's a serious one where we're looking at. It's not just a one time, it has lo- lasting effects, you know, to the fleet.
There've been instances where, where they have been replaced at a later date with a, a new vehicle, you know, that, that's ongoing, that does have the recap on it. There've been times where, where like this vehicle will, will take this place now. Couple of years from now, there'll be another vehicle that'll rotate out that could fill that role. We'd, we'd rotate to the, to the newer vehicle, remove this one from the fleet. And so there is that rotation that happens as well, uh, with the hand-me-down vehicles. So there is a combination that goes on there, so.
And, and to make sure I'm right on this, our, our reimbursement per mileage via the IRS is fifty-six cents mile?
Fifty-eight.
Eighty. What is it?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. Okay, so.
Other questions on this?
So at, at eighteen to twenty thousand miles, if we're re, if we're paying for our victim advocate to be using their own car, we're gonna be reimbursing them eleven thousand plus or minus, maybe as low as ten, maybe as high as twelve, depending on...
Yeah. And I, and I, I, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to say that there's, that this is, this is good or bad or anything of that. And I, I just think that as we're looking at the fleet overall, um, I would prefer that we fold this in to the conversation as we get down through it.
And I think that's fine. What, what these vehicles are right now is they have not been placed in surplus, so they're not out on auction. But I believe they're actually being used currently like this, waiting for this to happen. So I think in the interim, if we wanted to, to hold this action until we were done with the other analysis, that, that would be fine. They're, they're not gonna be sold in the, in the interim, so.
Okay. So if we were to continue this or to do a little more analysis to try and see if we can fold it into, things will continue to function okay?
Yeah, they're, yeah, we're, we're not just, okay, we're gonna sell the vehicles tomorrow because that, that, they are currently being used as, as these are, so.
Go with the analysis.
Right. I, I don't know if, yeah, and that's, and, and I would feel, as long, I don't wanna continue it if it cuts off. Cause like I think a couple of them, you know, in my mind, as I read your reasoning and as we've talked today, it makes sense to probably keep them, but I'm not sold that that's the right thing to do.
Sure.
And so if we continue this, I wanna make sure we're not hampering your ability to keep doing what you're doing until we come to a, a true resolution on it.
So I just did some calculations back there just on what we would pay in mileage for one academy car. Uh, five days a week, four fifty-two weeks, as we've had academies going on all along. It'd be twenty, twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars in mileage reimbursement that we'd have to pay. And that's just for one academy.
For one academy. Thank you.
Other questions for me?
Nope. Motion? Move that we continue regular agenda item number one for three weeks?
On second.
I got a motion and a second to continue agenda item number one for three weeks. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, that passes three zero. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
That's it? Okay. On our closed meetings, we need item nine, ten, and eleven, and twelve.
Motion to strike regular agenda number, item number eleven?
Second. I got a motion and a second to strike agenda item number eleven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero.
Move that we, uh, approve and set a date, time and location for closed meetings as outlined in regular agenda items numbers nine, ten and twelve for today's date at this location following the completion of our regular business.
Second. I got a motion and a second to approve set date, set a date, time and location as stated, number nine, ten and twelve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. That passes three zero. There are no, uh, well, see, we did our work session at the beginning, so, uh, is there any public comment?
Commissioner, I would suggest that you take item eight on regular agenda. You handle that one by separate motion so it's clear that we adopted that instead it's just being on consent. But that's the adoption of the budget, tentative budget.
Although that's...
And that was on consent?
It was on consent for review.
Does that mean we've adopted it?
Isn't it the same as every other item?
It does. It's just, uh, would, would be specifically in the minutes that that has been done, just for clarification. Just a recommendation.
Is there any public comment? If none, we'll move into our closed meetings.